For the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Couple of announcements. Our next regular commission meeting is Tuesday, September 23rd, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. We have introduction of new employees, Mr. Messis.
All right. Good evening, how are you guys? We are doing our staff introduction, it's been awhile since we have been here. I think the last time we were here was about October of last year, and we've got some new faces. We'll start here. This is Angel Rodriguez. He just started with us about a month ago and has just gotten on shift. Then I have Jonathan Meadows here. He is, his family's from the community, he started with us around February, March. And he has gotten his EMT basic and is now getting field experience before we cut him loose on that and is currently working on FIRE 1 and 2 right now to get his certification for FIRE. Josiah Martinez, and he's a local kid also. And right now, he's just one of the drivers as well as Angel back there. He is going to be taking the EMT probably in the spring. Elijah Crossen, he came to us from Trinidad and he had his EMT already, so right now, he's working on getting his stuff together so we can cut him loose for EMS side, but then he's starting to work on his FIRE credentials and before we can go on to the FIRE 1, FIRE 2 academy. So, that's Elijah. We have Phil Valet, he comes to us from Trinidad as well, his wife is the volleyball coach at Trinidad State. He came to us also with an EMT license in hand, so this has helped us a lot having these guys that have licenses already. He's going to be working on getting his credentialing for FIRE 1, FIRE 2 as well. Then Kayla Osborne. Kayla came to us, was it last, last year, I think December, November, December of last year. He was doing an internship program through Des Moines School and he would come in every Friday and work with us. And at the end of the school year, he graduated and we put him in an EMT class and got him to where he needed to be and now is working on getting his EMT license because he's got to do the testing and then we'll get him going on the FIRE stuff. So, that's Kayla. And then we have Jacob Helton, his mother is a nurse out at the ER, if many of you don't know Lana.
She knew one of the original miners, that's how long she's been there.
Jacob is, got his EMT license, he is working on his FIRE 1, FIRE 2. He finishes academy with Meadows. Two weeks, in two weeks, they'll be done with the FIRE 1, FIRE 2 academy. But he's got his EMT license and we're good to go, right now.
Marty, can we get a group photo with all of them together? Jayden, you can join him, you're kind of dressed the part. Doesn't have the tats. Make sure we can see everybody's faces, guys. There we go. Thank you.
Great, welcome aboard.
Staffing, we are, gosh, I forgot the number, like 13 and maybe 15, we're lacking like two, two bodies. Technically three, but we're working on that. We're sitting pretty good right now. Alright, if you guys need anything, you know where to get me. Alright.
Alright, thanks Dusty.
Marty.
Alright, also at this time, we would like to express our condolences to the Maldonado family. It's with deep sadness and a heavy heart that the Raton City Commission extends our condolences to the family of Jim Maldonado. He's former Colfax County Commissioner as well as the County Sheriff. He passed on September 8th of this year. Jim was a dedicated public servant, gave much of his life to the betterment of Colfax County and this entire community. His legacy of commitment, integrity and tireless service to the people will not be forgotten. Jim was sort of a mentor when I got started into this, he was the County Commissioner at that time and we had several discussions. As both a leader and protector of the people, he touched countless lives with his kindness, dedication and his service to justice. Well, the city of Raton and Colfax County have lost a great friend. Servant and leader Jim's contributions will continue to inspire and to guide us. Our thoughts are with his family, his friends and all of those who had the privilege of working with him during his many years of service. Truly standing on the shoulders of giants like Jim and he's starting a new life, on a new horizon. He leaves us behind, our community and our community is a better place for knowing him. May he rest in peace, God bless. Thank you all. At this time, we will take items from citizens present, if you would like to address the commission. Now is your time, however, it's something on the agenda, please wait till that item comes up.
I don't think this is on the agenda.
Okay.
Kathy Honeyfield.
That's all I want to know.
He's on trial. I run Raton School of Dance, y'all know me, Kathy Honeyfield. And I'm just concerned about the amount of people who walk their dogs off-leash downtown. Someone's dog on leash got attacked badly a couple of weeks ago. They almost lost the dog, but the dog was saved by vets. But it's ridiculous what's going on. I have little kids from three and a half up to 14 years old walking into my studio. And if a dog's going to run after, unleashed dog can run after another animal and we've seen it several times. It might go after a child. And I don't understand, and I know the police are very busy, I'm not picking on them, I'm not picking on the dog catcher. But these poor, and I'm defending the dogs actually, because these poor dogs, the owner should be responsible enough to take care of their animals. They love it that much. But they walk in between the cars and come out, a car could drive by and hit it and not want to. So, and then on the underpass, they watch, these little tiny dogs are walking with these people and if the dog jumps off the curb and somebody's coming around, they would never see it. You have to be so watchful. So, I was told there is a leash law. And I think either to me, a policeman, if they see a dog off-leash, stop and cite them, give them, not cite them, but give them a written warning. Get name, address, all that. And you know, you need to have your dog on a leash, if not, next time, you lose your dog or you're fined. They need to be responsible. Like I said, I really feel bad for the animals. Like I said, they shouldn't have dogs if you're not going to take care of them. I just, I have to bring it to you guys and I know you probably see it, but I think it's a big deal and it needs to be addressed.
I agree 100%.
That's it, that's all I have to say. Alright, thank you.
Do you want Mr. Messis to talk with the police and the dog catcher?
And maybe just start stopping, you know, and just maybe if they know people are aware or that the police are going to start bothering them, then maybe they'll start minding the rules. But thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else wish to address the commission at this time? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to the action items. Item 6A, deliberate act on approval of the August 26, 2025 regular meeting minutes. They are in your packet, should have had time to go over them. If there are no corrections or additions, they will stand corrected as approved. I should stand, they will stand approved, there you go, corrected as approved. As presented, that was what I was looking for. Thank you. Been a long day. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none of the minutes stand approved, thank you. Item B, we have a presentation, the Raton Adventure Center, Mr. Messis.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to call forward Sandra Young.
I'm glad you fumbled your words first. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager and Madam Clerk. We are Sandra and Shane Young of the Raton Adventure Center at 216 South First Street for our annual report on the Coors Building Metropolitan Redevelopment Project. We entered into this lease agreement with the city of Raton on May 16th in 2023. We began the extensive cleanup of the property that day and started cosmetic repairs on the main floor and opened our doors approximately two months later on July 20th, 2023, in a limited capacity. Upon signing our lease, there were seven retail or food businesses open on our block, including ours. Currently, our store and Carl Swanson's Gallery are the only stores open full-time as the alternatives to violence thrift stores, yet another business, closing presently. We've done our best to make Raton Adventure Center storefront enticing and noticeable. We continue to work on the cosmetics and keep the area well lit and have security cameras with active monitoring. During our first summer of occupancy in 2023, the degree of ongoing damage from the water was discovered and assessed and the city completed structural repairs in October of 2024. The construction definitely impeded our ability to attract customers during that time, but we remained open with construction when the construction allowed. And I continued to add inventory and create custom fixtures. Archileta Construction and all of their subcontractors were just amazing to work with. The Raton Adventure Center continues to grow, we see a steady flow of both locals and tourists as customers. Philmont Scout Ranch is a major source of shoppers for us in the summer and I stay open every night until the train leaves during their season. For our part, after the initial cleanup, we have mitigated damage from broken pipes and water leaks. We've upgraded lighting to energy efficient LED fixtures and we've taken over all the utilities on the property, paid our lease amount and keep our license current per the agreement. The Kangaroo Cafe has been added to the business platform since the original RFP was submitted. Based on the need and potential for additional food options in Raton and it'll occupy the back of the first floor and customers will have to pass through our retail store to pick up or place orders. We've already begun the process of becoming restaurant managers and have consulted with Tanya Feely with the Department of Health regarding the layout and design to make sure we are code compliant and can expand if needed in the future. Chief Burke has also advised us on the cafe. We've done our best to promote our own business as well as others downtown. We participate in or sponsor several local events. We've enjoyed being a part of all the Main Street activities, participating in the former Run to Raton, events at the Schuler, as well as events at Sugar Reed and out at Vermejo. We provide a point of sales for tickets for the Kiwanis Fishing Derby. We really enjoyed forming that new partnership this year. And we've also been appointed ticket sales for several local charities. We will continue to volunteer and support all of these events and organizations and we're always seeking to find new partners for downtown. We're still working on the Western Packboro Association to bring multiple Packboro races to Raton and Colfax County. As most of you know, we've also hosted out-of-town economic development attendees and officials in the Raton Adventure Center and have been pleased to share our experience at the Coors Building as well as encourage others to come to Raton and start a business. We've also provided open access to the progress and the project to Raton Main Street. We're currently finalizing our remodel of the Raton Bunk House on the second floor and the Down Under Printing business in the basement. Once the current phase of construction is complete, both of those businesses will be furnished and open. We're currently running our print shop out of our building over on Kiowa Avenue and we've been able to provide custom t-shirts for local events such as the Vermejo Charcoal Burner and we've employed local skilled individuals to accomplish that. We've done our best to collect local period items for the Raton Bunk House as well as solicited local artists for decor as it is very important to us to preserve the history and to keep it a part of the building and experience that we will provide. Currently, we have employed several individuals with the skills to help us with the cosmetic work on the second floor. The Raton Adventure Center had a great summer season. I've provided the sales trends in your packets. We continue to rent kayaks for use up at Lake Malloya and this coming weekend, we're donating kayaks for the Use of the Master of the Mountain event and we're also providing a safety checkpoint at the top of San Francisco Pass for the same event. We now have an ADA compliant bathroom on the main floor and are awaiting permitting plans for the replacement of all of the plumbing, gas and electric that was removed from the building during the city's construction of the new back wall. That was a major expense that we weren't anticipating, but we're dealing with it. That infrastructure ran up to the second floor and has put a delay in our remodel progress for the Raton Bunk House as well as the Kangaroo Cafe. We're patiently waiting our turn for the commercial contractor to become available to complete this phase. For now, we have all of our kitchen equipment for the Kangaroo Cafe sitting in storage along with all the appliance and cabinets for the upstairs bathroom and kitchen just waiting to be installed. Our entire MRA agreement was predicated on meeting employment and building use goals at the end of three years and sustaining them for three years. Despite the major setback of the structural repair on the back wall, we still anticipate being able to meet the goal of our four employees. We will need to hire a manager for the Kangaroo Cafe, a manager for the Bunk House and two additional employees for both of those businesses as well as for Down Under Printing. At this time, we would however ask that you take into consideration the one-year delay as well as the current delay related to replacing all of the plumbing, electric and gas into the rear of the building. Should something unexpected further delay our meeting of our employment goals, the language of the original RFP, the subsequent ordinance and the MRA agreement does allow for mid-project adjustments and mutual renegotiations. Regarding our current business platform, despite the decline in businesses present on First Street, our Adventure Center continues to grow. Our printing business supplements the seasonal slowdown and we're confident that the Kangaroo Cafe will be a huge success and will be a year-round economic driver for our multi-use platform of the building. We're also confident it will attract business to First Street. Our marketing strategy, as outlined in our original proposal for the Raton Bunk House, remains unchanged. We've had Chief Burke look at our project, a couple of times actually, and advise us on occupancy. We were greatly concerned about the proper egress out the back of the building due to the work done on the back of the adjoining property to the south to correct the water drainage issues. We continue to address that issue. We will be installing additional fire detection equipment that is actively monitored by Simply Safe in the Bunk House as well as a secondary story fire, second story fire ladder that will meet code. We're lucky to have officials like Chief Burke as public partners with these projects. In your packets, I've provided a detailed review of the project's timeline thus far, progress to date and I've also included the sales trends for the Raton Adventure Center. In addition, there's a summary of contracted work that we have paid out of pocket for the remodel and we persist with our original business plan. Despite being one of the only businesses remaining on our block, we feel confident that we will succeed. We welcome all of you to stop by the shop and see our progress for yourselves. I've included multiple images in your packets as well. We're currently sanding the floors and stripping the wood trim on the second floor and there is extensive sanding and resurfacing of the plaster walls in progress as well. We'll continue to update Jayden before we proceed with any major work and we thank him also for making the time to come to our site on short notice when we need him. He's a fantastic public partner as well. While I'm at it, I would also like to thank Brenda Ferry and the whole board at Raton Main Street. They've continued to support us and include us in the promotion of downtown Raton and in the whole Main Street USA projects. Thanks to our own self-promotion as well as Brenda's, we've appeared in several New Mexico publications as well as national publications. Main Street USA even used us in their nationwide campaign as well as their GAMSA campaign. Our original business plans and projections were predicated on the current city projects during that time when we responded to the RFP, including the potential of the tunnel reopening to the park and the study we were provided for the future use of Roundhouse Park as well as the potential trail systems being added to Bartlett or Climax Canyon. We are also participating with the city and Walter Luba to have a presence in Sugar Reed Park and we were ready to submit an application for an extensive concessionaire agreement which we've been informed will no longer be available. I've sat in on several business sessions with Cynthia Melina and I will continue to seek her advice as we come closer to opening our bunk house and cafe. And as she likes to say, we have learned to pivot. Despite the setbacks we forge on and are hopeful that more businesses will join us on First Street as we have really felt the effect as each business has closed. Again, please stop by, see the progress for yourself and I stand for any questions. As you'll see after that, I do have an itemized list for you of everything that we have ready to put into the building. I included some of our interactive images as well as some of the work going on in the building, what the building looks like today versus the cover shot, a little bit about the printing business in the back. And if anybody's interested, I also have a copy of most of the articles that we've been included in. The most recent was Albuquerque City Lifestyle Magazine who is doing an all-encompassing article on adventure travel and backcountry travel in the state of New Mexico.
Yeah, I've been in, we've purchased a couple of t-shirts.
I appreciate when you all come in, bring your family, it's lovely to see you all.
I was there the other day, it's great.
Yep.
Looks great.
It's a daily, a learning curve down there, it's a lot of fun, I enjoy it.
Any other questions, comments?
I do and I, please pardon me because I was not with the group when it was originally put together. And so, I asked the city manager for some background information, so I'm referring to what you originally submitted. So, how many people out of the original development team remain?
So, when we originally responded to the RFP, prior to the formal submittal of all the materials, we did inform the committee that Mr. Moss was not going to be remaining in Raton and that he was not going to be part of the proposal and I had offered to rewrite the entire proposal without his name in it or to just put Shane and I. So, when the committee made their decision and I interviewed with them, they were very well aware that it was just going to be Shane and myself.
So, have you coordinated with Main Street to correct those documents or amend them though to reflect that it's your organization now, not?
So, the lease or the ordinance?
Yes.
Because that's all, so Shane and I are Moss legally. We're, that partnership is, and we legally own Moss and the rights to Moss for the United States. Jeff has the overseas aspect of that, Jeff Moss has the overseas aspect of that and the historic aspect of that globally. And all of the paperwork that we have in file now is appropriate, it's under just Shane and I and we are the owners of that.
And so, that corporation's still viable?
Correct.
Well, that answered that question here. Did the Rails to Trails thing ever, was Amtrak cooperative on that or?
They were initially receptive to us pitching an idea to them and we just, you know, and then the person in charge of that marketing program with Amtrak, I believe, left. So then we had to start those discussions all over again. It is something that we are going to further on with. We're just waiting for some of the more, for some of the trails to be developed a little bit here, it's better, like Climax Canyon and the Bartlett Mesa Project and Sugar Reed's linking up, they're in the process of developing another trail around Lake Malloya at the moment and the alliance with Fisher Peak State Park. So, we're hoping that we can go to them with a much more diverse plan on what the trail systems are going to be like here and then we will push ahead with the Rails to Trails marketing program with Amtrak.
So, that door hasn't closed yet?
No, they have, they have two different places where we would be advertising with them. So, in their stations where you're waiting from Chicago to LA and anywhere else in the country actually, they have big banners and posters that they promote travel on. They also have small banners inside of the rail cars and in the dining car. And then they have on their website itself, when you're booking and looking for, to plan a trip, they have little banners and things that pop up. So, like any other big company, they offer a multimedia platform for you to pick and choose what your campaign is going to be. They're actually very interested in advertising here because they want to, they actually want more passengers coming into Raton, not just coming through. And there was a, there was a private company trying to create a cross-country train, Amtrak trip that would be coast to coast and they would actually be running that through Raton. They were originally thinking about Amarillo, but it's not scenic and the numbers, the studies they did said, no, you have to go up here. So, Raton would benefit greatly from that. So, basically, it would go Kansas City, La Junta, like it does now, down through Trinidad and here. And they're allowing, if that happens, people can book that trip, they can stay for a few days at each place and then get on with their ticket at a later date. I don't know if that's going to happen, Amtrak is a little hesitant on whether they believe that that business proposal has teeth or not. But we'll see where that goes.
There was some discussion about them canceling the train station or the train stop here in Raton for a while. I've also reached out to my marketing company, I have a direct mail marketing company that I worked with extensively in my previous businesses and asked her to compile a list of the potential names along the corridor where the Amtrak train runs so that we can attract some of those people anywhere from, as my wife says, Chicago down to LA and you know, what would be our best attack for who we would market to, either directly or through email listings. I have those numbers if you'd really, if you'd like them.
The SpotX GPS, did that ever come to?
We still have some of the units, it is definitely something, but that technology has been changing so dramatically. What's changed a lot is iPhone came out with their SOS procedures on their iPhone. It hasn't made the SpotX redundant, but it has definitely changed their market segment on it. As that technology constantly evolves, the new latest technology comes up to the league.
We'll still incorporate something like the SpotX because that gives us the ability to track someone. The phone doesn't, but I can legally have them sign something and say, you are actively being monitored. And I, those ping every, you set the perimeter, but if I want that to ping every 15 minutes, I have that client on a map pinging every 15 minutes. And then they, they have an SOS and they have the ability to be evacuated if they need it. But it gives us the ability to see where they are at all times.
The bike rentals, did that ever?
We've compiled a vast, or probably at least a dozen to 14 bicycles downtown. We do want to promote that as a more social event here in town as well, get some of the local residents out utilizing the bike path. When we initially did that, we were hoping that the Stinky Tunnel would be opened and then it would provide an easy access down around House Park and then onto the bike path. But at the moment, we are still looking at that as more of a social outing event. But we will have bicycle rentals, once again, as soon as we have a more significant trail network provided. The one in Climax Canyon will be a little challenging for bicycles, we just don't want to inundate those trails, those new hiking trails with bicycles first of all. We're hoping that we can go further along with our connectivity between the bicycle path down here and Sugar Reed Canyon. Did that come to fruition?
A lot of insurance carriers are not insuring activities like that anymore. So, that was also a little bit of a hurdle to find new carriers for professional liability and for outdoor adventure period. That's been a, it's a huge growing market, but a lot of carriers have been having other issues and they're dropping, dropping coverage like crazy.
To that point, we looked at, the city looked at contracting with a bicycle carrier and we ran into the problem with the issue.
And the problem is that they want a blanket coverage policy, no matter how many bikes. And the problem is that they want a blanket cover policy, no matter how many bicycles you're going to have, it's the same price whether you've got two bicycles or twelve. And at this point in time, as you've experienced with the insurance carriers, it's quite pricey. And it is something that we do want to get with the city first of all as well, because you have that liability issue of young kids, some of these electric bicycles now are doing 60 miles an hour. There is different phases or categories of the power output of the bicycles, but, you know, to have a kid ripping down the sidewalk at 60 mile an hour, that's a problem.
Yeah, and as we all know, even if it's a privately owned company running it, who's going to get the blame?
Yep.
It's going to come to us.
Well, we always got to keep this one.
Currently, we do use our bicycles and our kayaks as, as equipment, as part of our sponsorship of events. So we had some people using the bicycles out on Romejo, and our, as I said, our kayaks are getting used. No one requested a bicycle for this event. They all have their bikes, but the kayak is a, is part of that event that's usually a swimming portion, so a lot of those people that wanted to do this race and don't own kayaks, we're providing those so they can still do the race.
That opens up things like Master of the Mountain, to be able, a customer from West Side Chicago can jump on the train with a bicycle and come down here, but carrying a kayak onto a train is a little bit more cumbersome. So we offered, we're going to be working very closely with Master of the Mountain, Jared Chatterley, to be able to provide that ability for someone to come in here, and we donate the kayak to them just for the betterment of the attendees of Master of the Mountain and any other events that we're hoping to support down here.
I have to thank the visitor center. They have sent us a whole lot of kayak renters. They're mentioning us in the center. We've had some great families come in, and they, now that they have a little bit more to do, they have said, we'll absolutely come back and maybe extend our stay now that, you know, we know we can do this and it's available.
As you know, they've got their kayaks out to influencers out there, and their influencing campaigns through Great Divide and Explore Raton has been very well received.
The assumption of the insurance, that doesn't kick in yet?
For the property?
Yeah.
Correct. We have professional liability and contents insurance.
You'd indicated in your report there, your labor for you and Shane was around $21,000. You have that broken down, though, as to?
Where do I see that? I actually didn't put a, I said, we've got a lot of our own personal labor in there. I did not put a, an amount to that. We have hired, oh, so, I'm sorry, that line is out of order in the way I printed that. All those itemized items that we have that are going into the building, or that we've already put into the building, is the total of $21,000. I did not factor in our labor, nor have I kept track of it. I'm just there until I can't work anymore and I go home. But we have hired, we have had our own employees and other employees in there at a payroll cost. That's $5,800, and I do have records for that.
But your RFP, though, allows for you guys to take credit for your?
Correct. I just didn't put that number in here.
As you know, being a business owner, you're on call and you're with your business 24/7, so who to actually add up the physical hours of how much time I've got into the building with restoration upstairs, it's just, it would scare me off.
And when it's quiet there, which is frequent now, I literally lock the front door, have all the lights and the open signs and everything on, and I have a doorbell that's electronic that sounds all over the building. This goes on the front door. People ring the bell, and I come running down. They actually think it's funny. I come running downstairs with my apron and my hammer and whatever. So there's a lot of times when I'm technically in there for the store, but I'm upstairs sanding, painting, doing, doing whatever.
But you guys are keeping it?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
So going back to the concession contract with Sugar Eats, is there a Plan B?
Yeah, we're still waiting for an actual determination on when they're going to eliminate that house or that station at the base of the, at the base of the dam. We do now have to, as my wife said, pivot a little bit, and that was a, was a large portion of the extent of the concessionaire agreement that we would have been able to offer. That was just going to be a marshalling station, basically, so that we didn't have to bring the big truck with all of the concessionaire food and everything, back down, all the way back into town to plug it in overnight, so that the ice creams and, so it's changed what we're able to offer up there. We're also using it as a Starlink point for a direct line of sight cellular service up there, which we also found, because we needed it as a point of sale for Starlink up there. That's changed everything a little bit in the extent of what we can offer up there. So we've got to go back to the drawing board and offer, or put together a boiled down, you know, features that we can add up there.
So state parks hasn't just said, no, we're not offering?
No, actually, the state has, the state won't allow game and fish to use that house for anything other than storage, because there's not potable water in it. I know you had the dam inspected and all of that, but the last word we were given was that they are not going to allow use of that house and may in fact be removing it, which was as a shame, because it's very historic. That's an old, old, old house. Even if it's not usable, it's a shame that it, if it has to go. It would have been a fantastic addition, and bringing supplies and keeping people well supplied, even with the fishing and the bait, and we had, you know, we had some great plans for up there. I was even hoping to allow local people to store their own kayaks on that property in secure storage, because that's one of the big gripes we hear from people, is getting their kayaks up to the lake. So it's unfortunate, but pivot.
We just got to get back and get it boiled down, but it's not.
P'ay, pivot.
On the due diligence page of this agreement, you guys, or this proposal, you guys had originally acknowledged the derelict condition of the building, but was there any surprises other than what you commented? I mean, you kind of addressed the electric plumbing and HVAC.
Well, I think the biggest thing, I mean, we knew what we were getting into, but there was so much stuff stored into that northwest corner up against the wall. There were big giant objects leaned against that wall for years, and it was in fact curtained off from the Christmas display that was in there. When we got all of that out and saw the condition of the brick wall back there, which had been hidden, it was like, ooh, okay, well, that's a little worse than we thought. It wasn't until the first really heavy rains, and we found out that the membrane roof, the membrane roof had come in from all the flashing, and it settled and popped in, so we had a huge water ingress that we just didn't find out about until enough rain hit. So.
Beginning of the year when we first entered into this, we weren't in the middle of the monsoon seasons, and then we had torrential downpour not going after. And it wasn't until we actually went downstairs, we saw the amount of water pouring into the building and causing all the foundation, once, all the foundation issues. Once we started investigating that further is when we found the extent of the damage. And then, as the city knows, the first time they put out a bid for repairs, there was no successful applicants for it, and the whole thing took longer than anticipated. But as my wife had mentioned, when they had to mitigate the problems on the back wall, it changed the amount of work that needed to be done, because now all of the electric and the plumbing on the back wall was no longer in a position to be used. We lost about 12 inches of the back wall completely, and that's where all the plumbing was for the kitchen upstairs, all the electric coming on the walls. So it changed the amount of work that was needed. None of that could have been foreseen, not to mention the windows and everything as well, trying to preserve the historic nature of the building.
And then, I know you'd mentioned it here, but any luck with the alley access?
With, no.
With the access to the?
Yeah, we've been working with the city in order to try and find a resolution on that. I know the city has had its own hurdles with the building next door, but it was the building next door water runoff that was causing problems into the basement of the Coors building as well. Once again, that wasn't really seen until the downpours came through, and then we found the roots, you know, pulling through on the wall and just saturating the ground. The water had nowhere to run off, so.
But Wally actually has like an L shape in that property.
He, so that was originally one property with the carriage house, when it was donated from, I think it was a tinny mercantile, something like that?
Tinny, yeah.
To the city. That, the property got divided. Wally got the carriage house, and the city got the Coors building. They're lit, it's literally divided in half in that back courtyard, 10 feet and 10 feet, shared space. When the city?
The problem isn't on the Wally side, it's on the Armeeho side, where the stairs go up to the side and exit to the south of the building. We have to go around the Armeeho cinder block garage, for want of a better word, at the back, and the duct work that needed for the water runoff of the roof to get it out into the alley where it wasn't saturating the ground, the groundwater or the ground, you know, the?
Coming into our basement.
Because of those new walls, it was only, all of the water was being directed down into the basement area and just keeping everything completely saturated. As you know, with sandstone fund, sandstone foundations, it's not good to have water, to have those wet all the time. But the problem, the Wally side was addressed when we, when the city did the water runoff from Wally's roof and our roof into one, and it goes back alongside of his old carriage house building into the alley, but the issue is on the other side. It just stopped exiting from the, or a safe exit path from our building. Should there be a fire in the front, and we have to use the back step, we run into a blockade there, and that's going to be an issue with certificate of occupancy for the fire. But I know we're working closely with Jayden and the city in regards to resolving.
Yeah, the question I was going to ask about the concessions at the Sugar Eats Park is up, since I was in high school, I've always said, there should be some, some kind of concessions up here. Why do y'all have to drive to Plaza with them to get my bait when I run out of bait?
And we had a fantastic employee lined up to go, it just was begging to go up there and do that job, so.
So I hope that works out.
We found that people up there, if they've got young kids, they get up there, you know what young kids are like? They're like, I'm thirsty, I'm hungry. If you've got to drive back into town to get something, chances are, you're not going to go up there and complete the rest of the day up there. What we proposed was to be able to keep people up there for longer, enjoying everything up there, and so they go back home, chat to their friends, and say, wow, we had such a great time up there. We got to rent kayaks, we got the, plus we were going to be a point of sale for the fishing licenses, make sure everybody was compliant. When we rent the kayaks, we completely kit them out with the safety vest or the life jackets, with the whistle and everything. We make sure that everybody knows how to blow the whistle, and that's our preliminary safety course, basically. But it's a very good point of safety, just to make sure that everybody, we teach them how to launch themselves in the kayak launcher there next to the dock and everything as well. But yeah, it was about providing those services.
Yeah, if there's any possibility that that building stays, and they'll let, let that occupancy happen, we would still be all in for that.
It was also going to be a good first aid station, so it's another safety issue problem up there, but also a gathering point for the Audubon Society, so that we could actually go up there and have somewhere to stage and show people what birds are around there, because the Audubon Society was very interested in doing something with us for the bird watching, just everything up there. We weren't looking at it as a residence, but more a staging point than anything.
We also wanted to put the Friends of Sugar Eats office in there, give them a physical presence on the property.
Question for the mayor, though. I thought we owned that thing.
That's what I thought, too.
You do.
So, now the state parks dictating that.
I believe Mr. Campbell might, and they have a lease. If they're going to do that building, you have to be consulted to get permission. That's, for the state, as this goes forward, issue goes on, they just lease it. Who are the owner? Anything that happens in there, given upgrades and everything else, should involve this commission.
Mr. Luba had given us his blessing, but the last time I met with Lori Chatterley, she had mentioned that the state was not allowing, because of the dam inspection? As she explained it to me, the inspection of the dam, it was their determination that the city not be allowed to use that building for safety reasons.
You can probably answer that question even better than I.
There was a point of concern of whether the Dam Safety Bureau was going to allow use of it. That seems to have died down. There was even a point they didn't like the boat dock and everything on that side, because that's the emergency spillway of the lake. Dam Safety Bureau didn't seem to be pushing that issue as much. That's probably a discussion to be had with the state. At one point, that bathroom was on raw water out of the lake, and you could easily have potable water hauled in.
Yep.
It has been vacant a long time. It has an active, or has a septic tank there. The discussion of, I would be shocked at the state's side of leveling an historic building. I mean, they've rebuilt everything else up there. Before that would happen, I believe you'd hear, they'd have to come consult you.
We spoke with Mr. Luba in regards to this whole idea of moving forward on that, and he said, absolutely. They just use it for storage at the moment. So we'd already discussed with, at the time, it was Scott Berry, and since then, Mr. Mestres in regards to putting a container up there, because at the moment, there's been rodent ingress in there a little bit, you know, so some of the stuff has, would happen. So they said that they just transfer all of their stuff that's stored in there into the storage container, then it's secure and everything as well. Then we offered to go in and completely clean up the place, make sure everything was, you know, up to par. We weren't concerned about the potable water issue, because we weren't having a residence up there. It was really just a staging location, once again, to store stuff for the concession air agreement, kayak, and plug in more so for the concession air trucks, so that, as I said, we didn't have to bring it all the way back down into town to plug up, to go up there again the next day.
That's something we need to have a discussion with.
Well, because the thing that always piqued me was when Mr. Campbell was treating me like a rented mule up there. The roof on the barn, it needed a few pieces of corrugated iron, and God forbid we could touch that thing.
Yeah, we offered to do those sort of repairs for, just for aesthetics purposes as well. Just to tidy everything up. It just looks like a disused, unwanted, unloved little sort of section up there, and no matter what you do, you can't tear your eyes away from it. You see it no matter, it's high visibility, and it just, it's a shame. We offered to main, Raton Property Maintenance would often maintain the property down there, so that, you know, just to make it more aesthetic and aesthetic.
We're obviously history buffs and love, love the nature of that, and when you go back to the original photos of when they built the dam, and then see all the infrastructure that's now missing on the, on the east side of the house, it's pretty, I mean, we've got great photographic evidence of what everything looked like and how neat that that was once upon a time.
We'd love to further this discussion with the city, if we can work something out in regards to saving or stopping this idea that they're going to demolish.
A concessionaire agreement, this fat and a check written out for the, for the application.
Time for, not to speak for the mayor or the city manager, but we've had to have visits in Santa Fe with parks before, as to who owns it, what's your five-year plan? And that's always been a dream of that being a convenience type facility there, and to hear they're going to level it or possibly not ever let that happen. I don't, I know that probably a discussion needs to be taken place. I mean, for years, we've had that discussion, and now to hear it's not going to happen.
Yeah, that's, quite frankly, it was news to me to hear that they were going to knock the building down.
I believe that Lori had mentioned, Ms. Chatterley had mentioned that, that it was set for demolition because of whatever reason.
Well, it was, potentially, and for sure it wasn't going to be allowed to be used, so.
Every time that it's not being utilized, stands the chance of it falling into disrepair and the potential for?
It's actually got some really neat items stored in it that would be great to put on display in there.
Have you talked to Mr. Whitefield, Lloyd?
No, I haven't.
No? So he would be the one to talk to.
We'd be happy to.
I think we need to look into it.
Yeah, definitely.
So a phone call down to Santa Fe, somebody needs to?
Lori, you have a meeting scheduled with Parks.
Put on it.
Yeah, it was a severe blow when we heard that these negotiate, or this provision wasn't going to be available to us, and it was a bit of a blow to the system. We feel it would be really beneficial to Sugar Eats Canyon, especially with everything that's going on with the addition of Bartlet Mesa Ranch and Big Garden, and then the linking up to form a small Appalachian Trail, for want of a better word, with Fisher Peak State Park and everything, so.
Well, it would definitely facilitate more events up there as well.
Yeah, no, I think discussion is definitely necessary.
Yeah. Thank you, that was a wonderful presentation.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to take on this task.
All right, let's move on to item C, deliberate and act on recommendation of awards for the street infrastructure maintenance on-call contract. Mr. Mestres.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the information for your review and consideration. The section involves awarding a contract for on-call street infrastructure maintenance services. Seal bids were requested and received until 2:00 PM Thursday, September 4, 2025. Two bids were received. The low bid was submitted by GM, the Multsun Limited Liability Corporation, in the amount of $87,000 excluding New Mexico grocery receipts tax. of eighty-seven thousand dollars excluding New Mexico grocery receipts stacks. As Raton continues to grow and develop, it is critical to maintain and upgrade the city's roadways to ensure safety and accessibility. This contract would allow the city to call on experienced contractors to address these needs promptly. The city recommends you act in affirmative on this action.
Questions, comments?
A little background on these folks.
I was going to ask if you were aware.
They neighbor me down at Tenahona, America. The family is related to an old-time family from Maxwell or whatnot, but they base out of Santa Fe, but their roots are up there.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain motion. I'll make a motion when we approve.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on recommendation of award for the aquatic center control system upgrade. Mr. Mestas.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the aquatic center control system upgrade proposal, which aims to improve the operational efficiency of the city's aquatic facilities. Sealed bids were requested and received for replacement and upgrade of the automated water chemistry and filtration control system until 2:00 PM on September 2nd, 2025. One bid was received from CEM Sales and Service in the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety-two excluding New Mexico grocery receipts stacks. The project will focus on replacing outdated control systems that currently manage water temperature, filtration, and other critical systems at the center. The city recommends you act in affirmative on this.
Questions? Is this, whoops, I'm sorry, go ahead. Was this under, over? Under the projected, projected, they're all over. Well, it was over. By a lot? Okay.
Yes, it was definitely over, but.
Yeah, no, I just ordered cars for a couple of senior senators and yeah, they're definitely over.
Well, I will move to approve the recommended award for the aquatic center control system upgrade.
Second. We got a motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item E, city treasurer report, acknowledgement of the fiscal year 2026 final budget approval from the Department of Finance and Administration for Raton Waterworks and Raton Public Service. Mr. Mestas.
Mayor and Commissioner, in this report, the city treasurer presented an official acknowledgement of the fiscal year 2026 final budget approval for Raton Waterworks and Raton Public Service from the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. The final budget approval signifies that both the water and public service divisions are financially poised for the upcoming fiscal year, ensure that these essential services will continue to operate efficiently, and I'll yield to the chief of staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I think the city manager covered it all, but at the last meeting, we presented you with the city's budget letter from DFA, but at the time, we did not have water and RPS, so we present those two approvals to you this evening, and it is a requirement to make those part of the minutes.
It is. Any questions, comments?
I will move to approve the acknowledgement of fiscal year 2026 final budget approval from the Department of Finance and Administration for Raton Waterworks and Raton Public Service.
We got a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on out-of-state travel for city manager Rick Mestas to Washington, DC. Mr. Mestas.
Mayor and Commissioner, this trip was to take place in September and has been pushed back. We do not have a date, therefore the city asks for postponement on the section.
Motion to postpone.
I will move to oppose.
I will second. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. City manager report, Mr. Mestas.
Mayor and Commissioner, bottom line up front, a lot has been done in the past several weeks with property cleanup and demolition of buildings. The city will see a lot more in the future as we ramp up to clean up the city. Mentions and dispatches to Leonard Zamora of the Buildings Department for removing, selling infrastructure from Purdy and saving the city a lot of money on upcoming construction projects. The treasurer, the chief of staff attended the second annual Region Three meeting for our municipal county and other entities at New Mexico Highlands University in Las Vegas today. Public works, solid waste crews have been dealing with illegal dumping and dumpster repairs around town. The police are working on updating communication systems and are making great progress. Fire transfers are up with the MS and the new staff will be added, you know, being able to transfer more people. Engineering zoning changes are nearly done and updated codes will be brought before you. And if you take a look outside, we also have a new animal control vehicle that looks pretty good. Facilities repairs continue at the aquatic center in City Hall. The court will be working with the engineering department to bring forward the updated ordinances that I spoke of previously. Economic development is working with the National Travel Center on the potential location in or near Raton. And finally, some closing thoughts. Misinformation on Facebook poses significant danger by spreading false or misleading information quickly across that network of users. Due to the platform's algorithms prioritizing sensational or emotionally charged content, these files can go viral. This not only distorts public understanding of key issues such as health or politics, whereas in this week, who actually runs utilities in Raton, but also fuels division and creates distrust and can be incite real world harm. Remember what Abraham Lincoln said, don't believe everything you read on the internet. It's all a hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mestas, yes. The utilities in the city of Raton are separate entities. They are separate enterprises, they are governed by their own boards. We have no say on what happens with those utilities, other than when they come to us for possible rate increase or deduction. That's the only say we have. Any other needs that need to be done with utilities, you have to go to that utility. You don't come to the city because we have no say, absolutely no say. Alrighty, that being said, anybody else have anything to spew? Mr. Mr. Honeyfield?
I hate to beat a dead horse, but keep the oversight mode, please.
Yes, we.
I'm going to name it Mestas Park, so just adopt that. What's the weed drill cut the same, it'll look like a lawn and?
No, we're looking at the three proposals that we had come before the city, and we're probably going to send out bids for those. But, you know, we have to have the city commission decide which, you know, A, B, or C we're going to go with.
Okay. And I guess one other thing, truly running boards on that dog catcher's truck.
Yeah, they're, they're already ordered.
Okay, all right.
No, I can get into it.
All right, that's all I got.
Mr. Jacomo?
I'm here.
Mr. Huster?
Nothing today.
Nothing?
Surprise.
Just a reminder, some of us will be down at the municipal conference next week, so screw it, also. Hopefully it doesn't rain, so have fun. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.